I'd say Dear Aaron, somewhere.
Yeah, I like how he's in the middle doing all the work.
I know, yeah. Surrounded by the Secret Service on his raft. Okay, we're ready, I think. All right, well, it's 2:00. We'll go ahead and call our December 29 meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
At this moment, all who are able, if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards and proclamations today, so that will move us on to our citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who has anything that's not on today's agenda that they'd like to bring before the city commission or bring to our attention. Please just state your name and address and try and limit your comments to five minutes, if possible. Okay, seeing no one here, we'll go ahead and go on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 22, 2014. Item 6.2, award of contract for the sanitary sewer line replacement, project number 13-2961 to Smokey Hill LLC, in the amount of $832,820.
Is there any item on the consent agenda a commissioner would like removed or amended? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second. A motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That will take us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 14-10761, requesting approval of a zoning change from I-2 district to a PDD Plan Development District and the approval of a preliminary site development plan for proposed building additions on the Fire Station Number One site located at the northwest corner of North Seventh Street and Elm Street.
Ordinance number 14-10761 was passed on first reading on December 22, 2014. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for possible action.
I move we approve on second reading, ordinance number 14-10761, requesting approval of a zoning change from I-2 Light Industrial District to a PDD Public Use Facility Plan Development District and the approval of a preliminary site development plan for proposed building additions on the Fire Station Number One site located at the northwest corner of North Seventh Street and Elm Street.
Second.
Motion is second to approve ordinance number 14-10761. Any further discussion? If I could, this is our second reading, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, it is second reading? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Mayor, Householder.
Aye. That approves 5-0.
Item 7.2, authorize the 2015 Sub-CIP.
Ms. Wilhams, I saw your counterpart with the coffee shop today, and he said he wasn't going to be in, so...
[laughing]
I said, "Well, is your partner going to be in?" He said, "Well, I hope so." So, we're glad to see you here.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In front of you here is the Sub-CIP proposed for 2015. Most of these items generally consist of things over $10,000, and I think most of them are actually over $20,000. We're trying to get most of the just major projects on the Sub-CIP listed here. The areas here listed from buildings and facilities for a total of $220,000. Park and Recreation Improvements are $260,389. Special Sales Tax Fund, we have $2.5 million. Street Traffic Control and Ramps for a total of $3.1 million. And then Vehicles and Equipment for a total of $1.8 million. And System Enhancements for the Water and Wastewater Fund of $3170,000. Most of those are just major improvements to the water and wastewater system, so most of these are from available resources. Special Gas Tax, some of the alcohol tax are used for some of these projects, and then again, just what we have for reserves and some of the funds. Do you guys have any questions on the Sub-CIP presented here?
Any questions for staff on this?
I had just a question on the East Crawford Lighting. On that, was that, were those the ones, and I think it was from back at the time when I was actually the liaison on the Parks and Rec Board, but is that, is that the project where the underground wiring had gone bad and that we were updating all of that out there? Or was that something different?
The lighting is truly primarily to deal with the actual replacement of lights. I do think there's some wiring upgrades that are part of that. Look at Deion, yeah, he's shaking his head, yes. So, we will match all the life of all that up together, but the primary aspect is really to bring the whole system up to date, but really the lights are outdated. They don't provide the lighting that you would expect to have today based on the national standards, so...
Okay, would that be all of the lights out there on all the diamonds?
I can't recall now. Four of them.
Four of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Under Special Sales Tax Projects, NOC, you have hike and bike trails, $40,000. I thought it was my understanding that we would generally spend around in the neighborhood of $75,000 for that?
Forty's been the number that we've used the last two or three years as we've created a placeholder, and what we've tried to do with it where we can is to match any grants that we could get. There have been some grants, some through the community foundation and so forth, but that's been a fairly consistent number we've had. Certainly, it doesn't keep the commission from modifying that. If there's something you want to switch around, certainly could do that.
Well, we're starting to make more of an emphasis on hike and bike trails, and so I would like to see that addressed maybe in the next round, if that's good with everyone else, of course.
Yeah, I think when we look at that plan, right now, we have the, well, we have the Gateway Interstate signage at 175 in there, and maybe, we'll find out, but maybe we'll get you two signs, possibly just one with a little change. So, that's an item that you can determine the priority on. We have certainly the management software, which is now, it's going to be locked in. Again, the East Crawford Rec Ball Field Light Replacements, and this is just one part, one phase of that project. The maintenance set aside for the Kenwood Cove Water Park, the general fund tax stabilization as well, and then the bonds on the water park. So, those are really what we have in there. There's not, with those, there's not a lot of items that you can trade from, but I would ask you if you felt that the hike and bike trails are a priority to look maybe at the signage, because from my perspective, I like to do both, obviously, but if you really want to look at a functionality question, the hike and bike trails may be right higher there, but it really depends on where your priorities are for what you want to do with the dollars. It's up to you.
Maybe something a little related to this, and that is in the Public Works budget on this, and it looks like coming out of the sales tax, there's two items on there. One of them is new sidewalks, $50,000. The other one is sidewalk repair, $25,000. And since Mike's not here and Gary's here, are either one of those part of the new sidewalk repair initiative that we've kind of taken on over the last year? I knew there was some money put into a budget to...
Yeah, they can be. That was, that really, what that action that you took did give us a little more flexibility, primarily to create connecting links even in residential areas along collector streets, that type of thing. So, it very well could be, but that's been, again, pretty consistent with dollars we put in for those purposes. So, you might see a sidewalk on an arterial street. You could see a connecting link on a, or link on a, you know, any other street that we might have, probably with more emphasis on a collector than a typical residential, but, so it could be, but it's not intended to be earmarked just for that.
Okay.
On the ADA ramps, are those, how many do we get for that $40,000? Do you know, approximately? We used to have $100,000 in there, that's the reason I'm asking.
Yeah.
Maybe we should be getting somewhere near towards...
I'm trying to vaguely recall what it, if you typically, you don't always have four at an intersection, depends where you're at. You may already have some, but on a typical intersection with four, there's a guy, right there. You'll be able to tell, you won't have to guess.
Yeah, there you go.
Dan, did you hear the question?
Yeah, ADA ramps, they're running about $1,000 apiece, so that should get us about 40.
Oh, well, good. That's good.
Quite a few. I mean, we had, there was a time where we put $100,000 into that.
Yeah, it used to be $100,000.
And we feel like we've, you know, we get about 40 a year, and we're getting, on my blue sheet last year, I always have, how many do we have left? And so, I know we're getting closer, but we still, you know, have 10 years or so left. We feel like we've hit the main, you know, the main ones people are concerned about, and we try to do that every year, actually, with the Accessible Advisory Board, with the Disability Advisory Board.
Right, right.
Helps us to say, you know, we've got a route that we need some on, so that's, trying to hit, that number gives us enough to be pretty flexible with that. Though like Commissioner Hardy was saying too, I mean, that $100,000 has had to go to other things, I don't repairs and trails, and so you can move that stuff around if you want, but you kind of have to take from one and put it in the other.
Yeah.
So, it seems like we're, we've got a little bit of a holding area in about all of them. New sidewalks is like Commissioner Blanchard said, yeah, that's for, has been for connecting links, or say for our schools, last year had a matching component to it, so it's, anyway, that's what that's historically been used for, so these numbers are fairly consistent on that. We'll have a sidewalk repair item for you next week, actually, for the money that we were supposed to use in '14. We tried to get that to you today, but we didn't get to you until next week. So, anyway, we'll have quite a bit of sidewalk repair happening in the next year.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, anyone from the public here to comment on this?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ray Russka, 235 North Santa Fe. Did I hear this right a few minutes ago about the substandard lighting upgrade is covered under this? Did someone mention that?
Sounds like it was.
Could I get a little better, broader explanation of that, please?
Well, the general explanation is, is we have what are really pretty good quality lights that are in our ball fields across town. We've been fortunate to be able to light up most of our ball fields, all but I think one sector, or one area of them. But those lights have quite a bit of age on them now, and you have, what happens is you have older lights, and you have newer standards that come out. So, if we were going to put a new ball field in today with brand-new lights, the standards are more stringent with lighting requirements, and the older lights wouldn't meet those. That combined with the age of the lights and what creates maintenance issues has prompted the need to replace those in phases, so that's what we're doing.
So, what are the new standards of lighting now, it's currently in effect?
Not sure I understand the question.
You said you had an upgrade, it brought it up to current standard of lighting?
Yeah, the intent is to replace older lights that need to be replaced and make sure that we meet the new standards for the lighting, the lighting standards, in other words, lum, I don't know if they do it in lumens, but the lighting standard for a ball field is going to be, it's probably in lumens or foot candles or something like that, where they say you need so much, and the intent would be to meet that.
I was just curious what the standards were.
It's going to vary depending on situations and locations and things like that. I don't, I didn't memorize them, so I couldn't tell you exactly what they were.
I wouldn't expect you to.
Mr. Lafferty could probably explain a little bit more.
To answer specifically, tough word for me to say, in the infield, you want to have 20 to 30-foot candles is what you're looking for, and that's a pretty good range. You'll see some places on higher levels of play where you've got the ball that travels faster, et cetera, that will go 30 to 50-foot candles in the infield. The stuff we expect is in the 20 to 30-foot candles in the infield, and then basically 20 in the outfield. So, that's the specifications we're going by.
How many foot candles are in here?
I could not answer that.
I mean, it's all relative probably, but 20, or 30, or 50 really doesn't mean a heck of a lot.
Well over that are in here, yeah.
Thanks. Now, I just might clear up too. I believe I probably misspoke on the wiring for that. I think what I was thinking about was the scoreboard wiring.
We did have that replaced probably two years ago.
Okay.
We will have new wiring with this as well, would be a part of this project.
Right. Just to clarify though, that the wiring was not, was okay. It was something different.
Yeah, we replaced some stuff to a scoreboard at Dean Evans, I think, two years ago.
Right, okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
One final quick question. What was the cost on this upgrade? I mean, what do you estimate the cost would be?
$400,000. Yeah, it's about a, for four fields, so it's about $100,000 per field, plus or minus.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public on this? Okay, I bring it back to the commission for possible action.
I move that we authorize the 2015 Sub-CIP.
Second.
Motion is second to authorize and approve Sub-CIP for 2015. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 14-7167, authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment with McCown Gordon Construction LLC to acknowledge and clarify the legal significance of the agreed-upon stipulated damage amounts contained in the parties' Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment.
Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This item relates to a proposed addendum to the city's construction contract with McCown Gordon for the Bicentennial Center improvements. On November 10, the city commission approved a Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, which finalized and formalized the terms of McCown's construction of that project. Among other things, that Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment established agreed-upon dates for the city's partial use of the facility for events and concerts during that year-long course of construction, and it also established what we referred to in the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment as stipulated damages. And those are the amounts that we've agreed with McCown that are payable to the city if an event or a concert has to be canceled due to McCown's delays in constructions that we've incurred out-of-pocket cost planning for. McCown has provided the city with a form of performance bond for the project, which obligates the third-party surety to perform all of McCown's obligations under the construction contract if McCown, for whatever reason, fails to perform them, including the payment of liquidated damages, and it does use the term liquidated damages. The proposed addendum simply clarifies that the stipulated damages that we've established in the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment should be treated as liquidated damages for all purposes, including the purpose of determining the surety's obligations under that surety bond. It's just an extra layer of protection to make crystal clear that the stipulated damage amounts are within the scope of what the surety is agreeing to cover if McCown fails to do that. So, it's more of a housekeeping item. It does not amend the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment. It just clarifies how we're treating those and how the surety should treat them if that issue ever arises. So, that's the background on that item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Any questions for staff?
And that, working with McCown on that and their council, obviously, they have no problem with the addendum.
I know that they're agreeable to the concept. I haven't spoken with them personally or their counsel, but I understand they've reviewed it, and I understand it's what they intended all along, and we're just clarifying that.
Okay. So, the stipulated damages, this is a further, farther, further clarification of before where we maybe just had damages related to the beginning and end contract dates, maybe, or, and then this one then also includes performances and concerts?
No, we've had, we've, we're not changing conceptually the damages, the types of damages McCown is paying. They always have been, and they currently are, a per-event damage assessment. We're not changing that. We're just clarifying that those are going to be treated as liquidated damages since McCown's performance bond covers liquidated damages.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Any room for the public here to comment on this? If not, I bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 14-7167, authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment with McCown Gordon Construction LLC to acknowledge and clarify the legal significance of the agreed-upon stipulated damage amounts contained in the parties' Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt Resolution Number 14-7167. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 14-7168, authorizing an agreement with Community Access Television of Salina Incorporated for public educational and governmental television programming services through a public access channel and a community interest channel.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The city has had a relationship with Access TV since 1992 and has had varying amendments to the agreement since that time. The current agreement terminates December 31, so we thought we would get you a new agreement prior to that time, and we know we're about to run out of time. Some things that are noteworthy, in 2006, the state of Kansas passed what they called the Video Competition Act, and that took away the franchising ability of cable companies from the cities and left it with the state. And the result of that was the Access TV at the time had a, what they called was a pass-through fee that was a significant revenue source for their operation of 100, approximately $145,000. That was eliminated. And then soon after that as well, the city had negotiated an agreement that with the intent of phasing down the portion of our contributions, which at one time was 70% of our cable franchise revenue, brought it down to 40, and it's been 40 for the last few years, 40% of that. In 2011, we entered into a three-year agreement, and it was at the 40% level. About two years ago, there were some concerns vocalized from folks in the community about Access TV. A lot of that was communicated to you during the study session time, around budget time, and certainly that provided some concerns. Since that time, there's been a few changes. They have changed in their executive administrative leadership, and not directly related to them, but somewhat as a change in the environment for a community. We have U-verse, which is, in essence, it's like a cable television service provided by AT&amp;T, competes with Cox, so you have a competing provider of video services. That does change the game some. In early 2014, the city hired a leadership firm, which is John Divine, to conduct an organizational functional performance review, and that was sort of in response to some of the prior concerns. The report was finalized in June. It really provided an assessment and recommendations for the topics of programming, funding, education and training, governance, staffing, partnerships, public relations, technology, volunteers, and government programming. They included input from public surveys and focus groups, one-on-one interviews, and a lot of other sources. Since 2013 and with the new leadership, I think our perspective is very clear that the public sentiment regarding Access TV has been much more positive. The service response, very positive, act as we haven't heard any concerns whatsoever. It's been very, very positive in the community. And so, as a result, the city commission provided some general direction to enter into a future contract for services, including the key provisions of the leadership firm's final report. A lot of those we consider as best practices. So, when we look at the agreement that's provided in front of you for your consideration, kind of go over that real quick. Again, the funding allocation would be, is set at 40% of the cable franchise revenue sharing allocation. That's the equivalent of about $225,000. It does vary a little bit from year to year, but roughly about $225,000 per year to fund the operation. It's a two-year agreement with automatic one-year renewal increments unless either party provides notice by July 1st to terminate. The reason for the two-year is, in prior conversations, that seemed to be, it could be two, could be three, but the right mark, because in one year, the organization really doesn't know how to plan for the future. They're already thinking about the next year. But then after two-year, if we're unhappy, we have the ability to provide notice and discontinue. If not, we certainly wouldn't do that, and then the agreement would renew for the next year. It includes a lot of the same basic key legal provisions we had in prior agreement. Those are still very applicable. There's a modified requirement to video, air live when feasible, and replace specified city meetings, your City in Action program, candidate forums, legislative debate forums, League of Women Voter Lunch and Learn Educational Sessions, and a bi-weekly government news program. So, a little enhancement, but the issue there was a concern of, I think it was a candidate forum or something that wasn't aired before, and the thought being is if there are certain programs we would like to have aired, it's best just to stipulate and make sure that both parties know. The performance objectives that come out of the leadership firm's report include two new, the development of two new signature programs, creation of a training program to include goals and the training objectives for volunteers, a staffing plan with related training goals, a plan for soliciting training and utilizing those volunteers, and retaining them as well. An annual review of technology, including an emphasis on high-definition. They have, much of their equipment is high-definition equipment. The limitation really is the cable, the video companies, and so really the emphasis is for them to keep asking until one of them says, "Yeah, well, we can try to figure out a way to make it work." So far, Cox has indicated they wouldn't, and they don't have to. We're not sure yet with AT&amp;T and their U-verse programming if they would utilize that or not. It encourages the development of a strategic partnership and collaboration plan to encourage formation of partnerships with colleges, schools, public school system, media, and nonprofit organizations. We really kind of, you always emphasize partnerships in our community, and we wanted to reflect that here. A public input and complaint resolution process, public transparency, disclosure commitment, including the provision of keyboard meeting, staff, financial, volunteer, training, and programming information on their internet webpage, so it's available for folks to understand, to find it and understand it. Development of a three-year financial plan, including a financial oversight protocols, and that really folds into more broader strategic plan. All of these things actually fall into really a broader strategic plan, strategic guidelines for program development and financial underwriting. Some good suggestions as far as, because you have to be careful with this type of television, that you're not, you don't have a company that's advertising, but yet whether it's an individual, whether it's a private company, whether it's the government, you can sponsor or underwrite certain shows, and so as long as it's structured properly, there's opportunities there to create those partnerships and help underwrite program by program. Annual reporting on measured outcomes of all the performance objectives contained in the strategic plan, and the addition of a city commission-appointed non-voting board liaison. We spoke, and we feel that the leadership report presumed like a voting position, but they weren't aware of some of the conflicts that you have as a governing body when you're under contract, so we included it as a non-voting, and basically, it's an addition of a board liaison role. It wouldn't have to be a commissioner. You could, we left it open. You could appoint a commissioner, staff person, someone from the general public. It's really up to you. Doesn't matter. So, that's left to your discretion. We feel pretty comfortable that the proposed agreement contains a mix of all the real key provisions that I think you were looking for, and inclusion of the key recommendations of the leadership firm and the best practices, of their report and the best practices contained in that report. We think it does address the prior year citizen concerns and really sets them up to be a really good organization, a better organization with continuous improvement of things in the future. And we have met with Access TV officials and went through the agreement, and so we feel that they are in agreement and feel that it's a positive thing. It does create some workload for them. I mean, these things take some time, without question, and that's probably the biggest strain that they'll have, but there was, there was good agreement that they make sense and they'll help them, and it's a good opportunity to strengthen their partnership with the community as well as us. Again, from the fiscal note, the cost to the city is roughly about $225,000 based on the percentage of the cable franchise amount. It does, for the most part, conform with our strategic plan with regards to connectivity, both physically and socially. There's no question Access TV is a connectivity arm for the community, and even to a degree for us, and they do a good job with that, so it meets that. We offer up a couple of recommendations. One is to approve Resolution Number 14-7168, authorizing the mayor to enter into the proposed agreement, and the others do not approve the resolution at this time, certainly based on the agreement, the direction, and the need of the community staffs recommending alternative one for that, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I know that Marnie Ryan, the executive director, is here, and others as well. So, hopefully, we can answer any question you might have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions for staff?
How did we arrive at that 40% number?
I don't think there was a real science to it at the time. I think at the time, we were looking probably a combination of things, at our financial condition, which is, I would say, the prevalent factor, and really just looked at it and said, "Well, we'd like them to be there," but at the same time, there was a presumption at the time that they could fundraise the gap, the difference from the 70% level of the cable franchise dollars to the 40% level, and quite honestly, that hasn't been something that's happened in the past. I think it's difficult for that type of service to do fundraising to that degree. I think that's something that they've learned through experience, quite honestly. But that's, that 40% was somewhat of more of a way of getting to a number and then phasing it down to that number, so these percentages were used as we phased down from year to year.
I was curious, and maybe, Marnie knows the answer. I was wondering about the number of downloads, the number of, the amount of activity there is on the website. of downloads, the number of, the amount of activity there is on the website to, to the general public. How popular is that? Or maybe you know?
I'd probably want to defer to Marnie on that.
Okay.
Are you referring to, like, our meetings or just general downloads?
Any meetings that are televised and then available for download later.
Okay. My understanding is based on the surveying that was done, that the, our meetings, the other government meetings are fairly popular. They're a pretty popular piece of what, of what the community watches.
Okay.
Don't let it go to your head, though.
Wait for my Golden Globe.
Yeah.
Is that why they don't come?
Yeah. They're sitting, they're busy at home watching us on TV.
Are there any companies other than Cox paying franchise fees?
Yeah, the AT&amp;T does now, once they launched their U-verse, a video programming service. So before, it was just Cox, they were the only, in essence, video, the state calls them video programming, we used to call them cable companies. AT&amp;T is a phone company that's in the video programming business now, so we're seeing technologies merge, but we have two companies now.
And is there opportunity for local input or involvement with the U-verse?
No, it's, it's, that was one of those things, they have a right to provide the service, and there's basically a federal and statewide structure for how we then address that, and it was pretty much going through the motions of them coming to town with that new service and us being able to lock in the franchise amount and obligations to provide the two channels that we provide the programming.
Do you know what the amount is from AT&amp;T?
What, I'm sorry?
The franchise amount from AT&amp;T?
I don't, no, I haven't looked to see what the specific number is. They haven't really been in business too long yet, it's just been a few months, so we really felt that we wanted to let it settle in at least a year, because quite honestly, you might find that you don't have any growth at all in the revenue that you get. You could have a decline, because when competition comes to town, sometimes one of the ways to compete is to reduce your costs a little bit, to keep your market share, reduce your costs, assuming there aren't additional patrons that are, become customers, then you actually could reduce this number a little bit. But usually what happens is that'll occur, it'll come down some, it'll go back up a little bit, and it'll find its place. So really, the question is, is are they going to add more customers from the pie, you know, and have them pay, and are they going to keep the rates pretty similar as far, I say the rates, the cost of the service, subscription services, which dictates that, because it's a grocery receipts situation. So we really don't know. I doubt it's changed much. If anything, I wouldn't be surprised if it came down just a touch, but we don't know.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I have a few more questions, but if the, if Access has a prepared presentation or anything, they may answer most of the questions that I have, so if they wanted to get up and...
There's no more questions for staff?
Yeah, Commissioner, just not to shock Marnie on the spot too much, she'd asked if she needed a presentation, I said, "Well, I don't think so." I said, "There may be questions."
Oh, okay.
But, so, doesn't mean she doesn't have a presentation, but I told her, I said, "I wouldn't expect you would need a full presentation."
And I can throw this question toward you. Is there any way that any of the Access Television production can be broadcast through AT&amp;T?
Yeah, it is. There's no, it comes, it should be, I haven't, I don't subscribe to that, so I haven't checked, but it should be.
Oh, you're both on U-verse, aren't you?
I don't, I don't.
Oh, you are, okay.
But I don't...
I don't know what channel, and I don't, I don't know if it's the same channel, so I can't speak directly to that, but that, they should, based on the action we took and the statutory requirements, they're bound to do that, so unless there's a technical issue, it should be going out on both.
Hmm, interesting. Okay.
Hi. I've never been on this side of the podium before. It's kind of different. Well, if you have any direct questions for me, or I would just like to say thank you for just giving us a year to make some really amazing changes. I'm very proud of staff and our volunteers, we have the best volunteers. These people dedicate their time to really share with the community what's important to them, what they think the community needs to know. There's so many great organizations in Salina where people could volunteer and spend their time, and they choose to volunteer at Community Access TV, and we value that so highly. And it has been a very exciting year, we've had a lot of really good changes, I'm very proud of the things we've done, I'm very grateful for the support that we've received from the city of Salina, the city commissioners, and Jason Gage and city staff, and we're not out of the woods, you know, we've made a lot of great changes and we have a lot more to go, but we've just had a really great year, very fortunate. We received the largest personal gift we've ever received in our history of the organization, which is amazing, and our volunteer numbers are, we're having a nice steady rise. The floodgates have not opened, but honestly, I'm grateful for that, because staff would just be beyond overwhelmed, but we've had a nice consistent trickle, and a lot of people coming in with new program ideas and just very excited. So, change is never easy, but everybody seems to really embrace it, and so we've just been very fortunate, and everything has been very positive, and we've gotten a lot of really good feedback from the performance review and from the people in the community, and so we're just very, very fortunate and grateful to be here, so.
Great.
The questions that I have are generally around the development of the strategic plan and, and the timing of that. And so, more directly, the questions are, is when do, when would you expect to have that strategic plan ready? Is the number one, and then number two is maybe more for our staff and everything, and what role do we play in that? And if any, just review or sign off, or whatever the case may be. And then also on the financial plan on that as well, if that coincides with the strategic plan, or if it's on a separate time schedule.
Well, and it is spelled out, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, it is in the contract, we have certain dates that we have to follow where we have to get information. I think the first date that we have to hit, and I have this highlighted, and it's in the back of my folder, I apologize. But that's one of the great things that staff and board is going to definitely, we have to be aggressive on, you know, that's a requirement in the contract, and, you know, as far as building that transparency and being held accountable, that's one of the things that we really value. For example, like, the first date for our financial report's supposed to be on February 28th, 2015, or 2015, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it'd be on page 13, I believe.
Yeah, I got that, and I was reading through, and I made a note to it, and I guess, I thought that I was reading this wrong, because, I mean, December 31st, we're a full year into this thing before we have a plan done and approved. Is there any, I guess that's the only part that kind of stuck out with me, because I'm thinking that seems to be, is there, is there any way to get some sort of preliminary action before that? Because, I mean, if it's, what happens if we get to December 31st, and it's like, wow, it kind of doesn't seem to be...
Yeah, Commissioners, I think that's, that's up to you, and also the ability of Access to really mobilize around it. When you, when you think about these, there's the items that were listed in the agreement, there are a lot of sub-plans, from the volunteers, you know, the training, the retention, the staffing, the things going on on the webpage, the financial, the internal controls. There's a lot of little sub-pieces to that, and I think that the thinking was, is that it will take some time in the first year to really place all those together to where you have the comprehensive piece, and that's sort of the thought behind the timeframes here, but certainly those are subject to change if, if that's what you'd like to do, and also if the staff and board members of Access TV believe that they actually can, you know, deliver what you're looking for in that timeframe.
Is there, is there an existing strategic plan that can serve sort of a framework for moving forward? Is that...
Yeah, and, you know, you were talking about help. From our perspective, there's not, I mean, the agreement doesn't say the city shall do this, that, and the other, but I've already obligated, is, because we have a very good working relationship and appreciate the service that we get from Access TV, so our staff is at their disposal. I mean, if, we can certainly try to find examples of strategic plans. We have, we have yours, for example, and there are others that are out there, and we just really have a lot of other things we might be able to help them do to get this moving as well, and we'll help all that we can.
Okay. And just, just by way of comment and question is, you know, we're talking a lot of the other partnerships that we've undertaken about really getting a grasp on outcomes, and not just sort of checking off boxes and so, but really getting to positive outcomes. And by way of that, do we have a set of metrics, and I think someone mentioned earlier, if we knew about numbers of views and so on, and what our goals are for those, and if we're reaching those, and maybe what the outcomes of, of those might be. And I would just encourage, if it's not already part of what they are, that we do have a strong set of, of metrics involved here, and I know that others in the study session had talked about that in terms of volunteers and, and hours and programs and so on, so. I know I saw a lot of that in here, but hopefully we'll, because it looks like most of the board and employees and everybody are here, and they do a great job, and I think just, it's always good to kind of know what you're shooting for. And I think, organizationally, I think, I've seen a big change over there and appreciate that. And so, I'm, I'm encouraged by sort of the progress, and I like that, you know, if we're rolling in a strategic plan, I'm happy with two years. It's a long time, but I think with a plan in there, that's understandable to really set things up moving forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, to answer your question, section three, subsection C, it says, excuse me, outcomes-based, and it does say, "The strategic plan and report shall list all desired outcomes and related benchmarks associated with each specifically stated goal." So we didn't want to presume from our side what those should be, because quite honestly, we'd probably guess wrong, but in the process of this, they will be creating those, those goals, those outcome-based pieces that you want to see. And then, once those are created, and then future reports will compare and contrast to those. So if they said we would like, and I'm not sure how easy it is to measure viewership, but let's pretend that we can measure it, we want viewership to go from this level to that level, you know, a goal would be set, and then, and then we'd kind of monitor and see where it's at. And certainly, at that point, when those goals are being set and they come back and report, if you have thoughts about that, as far as what a goal should be, you'd have the opportunity to provide your input there as well. But it is definitely outcomes-based, and I think, quite honestly, as much work I speak for, as much work as it does create, I think in the end, it's, these are really good things for a small organization, because it's really difficult for small organizations with little full-time staffing to do a lot of these things, and that's why we need to help where we can. But I think it'll be real good for them, and in the end, everyone will feel pretty good about it.
Okay. Any other questions?
What is the percent of this contribution towards your total budget?
It exceeded, well, we hadn't even planned for it, you mean, but it had exceeded, I think it raised, John, didn't we say it was at about a 500, or 500% increase?
You're talking about outside funding. Of the budget itself, it's in the 90 to 95% currently.
Excuse me.
And then, look for that to outside funding, the change and the increase. As example, this year, outside in fund, outside funding increased about eight times.
Yeah, we might, evidently, we might have you come up. I was going to try and repeat what you said, but it's getting a little, it's getting a little wrong there, yeah.
This year, the outside funding, because this was one of the goals that they had had planned, has increased about eight times, and so we're looking to increase that more next year. The board, for the first time this year, did do a strategic plan in the June-July timeframe. It was part of the study you authorized, and they're looking to do the board strategic planning probably in the first quarter, once the new, there are new board members coming in, and when that action takes place in with the new board members, they'll do another strategic plan, and they'll include the benchmarks that were requested in the agreement. And funding right now is in the 90, 95% range, is from the, from the community. When the, as Jason said, when the change took place at the state, and I know there was a lot of questions about the number of employees, the budget dropped almost 50% over a two-year period, and now that's, that's leveled off and now starting to raise more outside funding.
The, one reason I was asking is that I know that the last time that I was communicating with you, it sounded like there were areas where you could use some improvement, like internet bandwidth, I guess. And is that still the case, where you're shoe strapped or whatever by?
Well, one of the, one of, part of our plans is definitely to increase that. Because of the gift, the donation that we were given this year, it allowed us to utilize and purchase a lot of equipment that we don't necessarily have to in the next year or two. It really was a serious benefit, so that we can definitely focus on that, because the quality of our video production and playback and online viewership is huge. I mean, that's, that's a consistent huge comment that we get all the time, understandably so. And so that's one of the things that, it was such a blessing that that gift was received, and that has enabled us to focus on that plan, to get everything ready to move on. So, we're, staff is looking into our different options, what's the most feasible within the realm of what happens today, you know, if the contracts renewed, what we can and cannot do, how much we need to raise in that, that aspect. But yeah, it's, it's a high priority, we have to have people watching, we have to have people wanting to watch, and we definitely recognize that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you feel like the internet, I know when I tend to watch it, I tend to go on the internet, obviously, I don't watch TV or cable or whatever, so I, Netflix or whatever, but I don't watch regular cable TV, and I, and I couldn't watch these meetings anyway because I'm here. And I probably, I probably wouldn't watch them if I wasn't here, but, but when I do want to catch something, I mean, I know I go to the internet. Do you tend to find more and more viewers going that way? And the one thing I know is that you can, on the internet, you can at least broadcast in high-definition.
On our, yeah, definitely. On, on our YouTube channel, we do on hi-def, definitely, yeah. We can track on the online, it's easier for us to track. One of the things that's in the contract and that we're going to start doing in our plan is to do, conduct more surveys to the community, to get a better understanding of viewership, to track what programs people are watching, so we have a better idea of our audience, because how can we market if we don't know who's watching, we don't know what people want? I mean, that is such a great challenge for us in such a good way, because we need to know where we need to reach out, you know, what people are wanting, and a good way for us to track what's been working, maybe this hasn't worked, let's try something different. So that's one of our main goals, as well as we need, we're focusing on finding better ways to track that and to do it more consistently.
That's one of the hardest things there is to do, though, Marnie. And don't get a defeated feeling, because even the city tries to find out what people really want, and it's really difficult for us to find out.
Well, we know we can't please everybody, but, but we definitely recognize, and that was one of the great things that came out in the performance review and the study, is that, you know, we need to do a better job of finding out what it is people, I mean, we know everybody watches, you know, the parades, high school football, the River Festival, I mean, those are the knowns, those have been the Access TV classics for, you know, as long as I've lived here anyway, and been a part of Access. But there's a lot of different programming that people really true enjoy, and so it's a better service for us, where we'll be serving the community so much better, and promoting with our volunteers, helping them promote their shows better and get the word out better if we can say, "Hey, you know, in the month of February, you know, so many X number of people really enjoyed this community health seminar program, you know, if you would like..." You know, there's just a lot of ways that we can better market ourselves and get the information out to the community with that information, so it's a definite priority.
The upgrades that you've been, you're talking about, that you're exploring, would that include anything that would be a perceptible difference if someone downloads a program from the internet, say? So that there's more clarity, or there's more, or whatever?
Yeah, one of the, the main focuses that we are working on is on our video on demand. I mean, you know, it's nice and sharp when it's all tiny, but when you expand it, it gets a little interesting, and that's one of the main things that we need to focus on, because I'm, just like everybody else, I want to see it larger and sharp. And so that's what we're working on, is finding out the exact price, what, what we need, what equipment upgrades we need with the current equipment we have, do we have to scrap and start over? That's what we're just researching and just trying to be very diligent on. So, it's not cheap, but that's okay, that's, that's what we do, so.
A lot cheaper than it used to be.
That's true. That is true.
I know it was in your control room, it's so funny to see the big front wall that used to have all the, you know, now there's two Tricasters or whatever down there, it's like, really, it's changed. I mean, it's still expensive, but it's gotten better.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, it's gotten a lot better, and more accessible, which I think really should only increase people wanting to do shows. The cameras are a little cheaper now, a little more portable, and, and hopefully, you know, people will get that energy to, to go do their own thing. I know, I see Cassius saying back there, now he was a big, I mean, he's been doing videos, I find he's kind of doing a special event coming up at some point, is he going somewhere that...
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Is he not? You're not taking a trip to Texas or anything anytime soon?
No, I got back from Vegas.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, you were doing a...
He was on a fundraising trip.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Well, I thought you were heading to South by Southwest.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's in March.
Oh! Oh, just that?
Yeah, just that.
Just, just going to South by Southwest. Probably the first Salina entertainer to ever to go to that, so, but, so, I mean, it's, not only is it community information, it's people like Cash, who had been a long time, I think, volunteer and producer of a show. It's not just informational purposes, this can help somebody for their, their own artistic sort of goals as well.
Definitely.
So, I don't think we need, I don't think we want to fall away from understanding that there's a real opportunity for that, that there as well, and appreciate that aspect of community access too, not just for information, but as an opportunity for people to learn about video production or as an educational place to go to. So, that side of it, for me, is exciting that you continue on that and love to see that. Love to see 10 more Cashes come out of town doing, the videos are, I mean, I was like, I was in there one time with the show, and I think maybe Steven did a show.
Yes.
There was a couple of gals playing acoustic guitar. And I hadn't watched that side of it in a little while, and I saw Cash's video, and I thought, this looks really pro-quality. I mean, it really did. I mean, it was pretty surprising, it was back on your TV, I'm like, is that your channel playing up there? That's, that's our channel.
If you don't mind, truly, to brag upon staff, this year, I have been so incredibly impressed with them and their level of dedication and just improving the quality. You know, we don't turn anyone away, but if we want to attract more people, they need to see us improving as well, and they have just done a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
And especially since I'm the old-timer, it's funny, I don't even edit anything anymore, which is probably a good thing. I'm sure Aaron, my Aaron will tell you, and Cash. But they, all of them have done such a great job, and they continually raise the bar. And it's, it's just very exciting to see, because, you know, back in the day when I first started Access TV, even when we run some of the older shows, it's just like, wow, look where we've come from, it's awesome. And so, I'm just very blessed. Staff has really worked hard, and they've endured a lot of change this year, and they're not afraid of it, I'm very appreciative of that, because I've been told this a time or two, I'm a tad demanding, not that that's a bad thing, but they always exceed my expectations, always. And that, as a director, that's such a blessing, to have a staff that is that eager to work with the volunteers and each other, so.
Yeah, well, Kate, like I said.
They, I'm just very blessed.
Well, it's been, like I said, I was pretty impressed when I looked up there, and I had a hard time believing, because in my mind, I was thinking of the old shows, kind of, not that there aren't the occasional ones of those two, because it is a volunteer thing, but, but I was, those two that were playing, I just thought, I can't believe that's our, that, I mean, it looked professional. I hate to, I mean, I'd hate to say it wasn't professionally formed, I mean, that sounds bad, but it looked really professional. And doing, getting into a little bit of that editing myself, I realized, it's easier now than it used to, but it's still pretty tough to make something look that good. So, kudos to your volunteers and your staff for making that happen, so.
Thank you. They do a wonderful job, I'm very polite, very pleased.
Anyone else, anything? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone from the public who'd care to comment on this at all?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. There's one part here about the addition of a city commissioner-appointed, non-voting board liaison. Has the commission actually considered anyone yet, or do you have anybody in mind? Or will that come later?
I don't think we've really discussed it or put anybody on there.
No, we haven't had, the commissioners haven't had any conversation at all on that yet.
Looking for a gig, Ray?
No.
That might be a good one for you, you've got some electronics experience, that might be something.
Very little.
Come on. Well, I mean, just, I mean, it's a thought, I mean, you could probably help them on some of that stuff, I mean, we could look at it.
I had one, one question for Marnie, maybe she could answer it. Are any of the programs downloadable by the public?
You can always view them on video on demand, but right now, what we do is, if you want to, and you know this, because you get copies, you can purchase a copy of a DVD. That may be something that we can explore in the future, but as of right now, we just have people pointing to the video on demand.
Okay, that's the answer. And I was looking for, and I just wanted to point it out to Commissioner Hardy, that you've mentioned the word "downloadable" for download these files. They're only viewable, you know, and Marnie just clarified that, and that's one, one thing I wanted to point out. As far as Marnie and her and being the director, I believe she's doing a very good job over there. I would personally recommend approval, because she does a lot of good work for Access TV, and the public benefits from her work are their work over there. And that's just what I'd like to comment about. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Are there, are there copyright concerns on, on downloads or anything like that? Because I know that if you do download the file, you can edit and manipulate the files, so are there concerns about that?
Well, as far as downloading and copyright, the individual producer owns typically the copyright of their program. And that's kind of how, you know, when anyone produces a program, they indemnify Access TV, the city of Salina, whoever, the producer takes responsibility. And the producers have the option, if they do not want somebody to make a copy or to receive a copy of their program, they have that option. Now, that really doesn't happen too often. A couple of years ago, we used to have a program, Psychic Live, and it was live, and they streamed it on our website, and people, they would get calls even from Florida, especially Florida. And they never wanted it to rebroadcast, and they never wanted people to make copies for the sheer fact that it wouldn't be live any other time. And, you know, if you, you know, so the individual producer has that option. But as far as copyright, where we, a lot of times fall into that, is just if it, if the producer uses copyrighted material without permission, that's where it gets hairy. But again, it goes back to the individual producer, so. I don't know if I kind of answered your question.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that was good. The only other comment I have before we move on with this thing is, is I appreciate that, and to kind of piggyback on a comment about making things easier to access for the, for the public, I appreciate that the responsiveness on tabbing the meetings with the agenda, because it really does help you find an item, if you know the number, on that agenda. So, my only request would be if you could put a small title of what it's, what the item is. So, if somebody's looking for something to do with, like, on today's agenda, the addendum to the bicentennial center agreement, that if they didn't know it was 7/1, they'd have to look at that or find something else.
Okay.
But that just is one of those things where the easier it is for somebody to find it, and the fewer steps it takes for them to get there, the more likely they are to be engaged.
Okay.
And so, I think that we're, we're getting there, and having that tabbed is a great first step, because I know, just for myself, knowing the item numbers, I can go there quickly and review and, and find things, and it's extremely helpful, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and we will definitely get that rolling.
Thanks. Any other questions for Marnie? Okay. Anyone else from the public? Sure, Phil. Well, you might introduce yours, I know you, but you might introduce yourself for the other layers.
I'm Phil Blahm, 118 each Republic, and I'm also on the board. I just wanted to say, make one comment. A year ago, I had, it was in November, I had the opportunity to do a production that was an interview of a guy who was on a B-17, and this part, which ended up with a series I'm doing now on World War II veterans from Kansas. And I was fortunate that I was able to show it at the Eisenhower Presidential Library, which was kind of a big deal. It had an auditorium of 130 people with 122 seats filled. The veteran himself and his wife came up from Texas for this, and 24 hours before the event, I had no video, because the, I had, was trying to upgrade it a little bit, because it's the Eisenhower, right? And this isn't just Access TV. But in doing that, I had to, I couldn't get it to convert from the format of the file to a DVD. And it kept crashing, so I thought, well, I need to download a patch, which I did, and suddenly, it couldn't find any of my files. And so, thanks to Aaron at, at Access, Aaron Carter, he spent about three hours getting that done, and I met the family at 6:00 PM the day before the event and walked in with the thing done at that point. I mean, it was that close. But I'm telling you this first because there are people like me who are trying to, as producers, trying to elevate what we're doing and really bring it to a, a level that the public hasn't maybe seen as much. And at the same time, that requires expertise, and it is getting me out of my comfort zone, frankly. And so, with staff like Aaron and Cash and those guys, they've been able to solve problems that I'd never had, I'd been doing productions, I don't know for how long, since I moved here almost, and I'd probably have done 25 or 30 productions. And they have in place the expertise to take care of this, or they figure it out if they can't. And I've seen Aaron do it on the fly. So, I just, I just wanted to say that that's something we really hadn't touched on, but I'm excited as a producer and as a board member, that we're going to try to increase our viewership of this kind of programming and that we are able to step up and do that. So, thank you.
That was a great thing you did with those veterans that.
Well, it's still going. I told the Creative Arts Industries Commission I would do between 6:00 and 10:00, and I've interviewed 20 or so, and I have another eight waiting for me to call, and I know there are more out there I haven't even touched on yet. So, it's, it's been quite a learning experience. But I think it's, it puts us kind of at the center, because we have guys that I've interviewed in Colby, one in Tonganoxi, one in Wichita, was a pilot on a B-29 for 27 missions, and they are going to be able to access all these on the internet. And Aaron set it up so that when you, is it on the splash page now?
It's on the front page.
Yeah, it's on the flash, front page now, Stories from the Heartland, Kansas, and World War II, that they can go to. So, suddenly, we're going to get statewide, well, actually, the guy in Texas will be able to look at it. So, hopefully, we'll get even national or even maybe international, not necessarily on mine, but, because I don't know if I'm that confident, but, you know, some of the things we're doing, why not? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Anyone else from the public care to comment on this at all? Okay. Thanks, guys. I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action or further discussion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 14-7168, authorizing an agreement with Community Access Television of Salina for public, educational, and governmental television programming services through a public access channel and a community interest channel.
Second.
Glad somebody moved, I was afraid the camera was just going to turn off, and the screen was just going to go to black. Motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 14-7168. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thanks, everyone, for coming out.
We're going to do the loopers of the city commission.
Oh, yeah, I'm waiting for that, yeah. Yeah, we, you should have plenty of material, yeah. You should have plenty of material.
We've got some stuff.
Yeah.
Item 7.5, Resolution Number 14-7169, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the architect agreement with Gravity Works Architecture PA, formerly known as PKHLS Architecture PA.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item relates to a proposed amendment to the city's architect contract with Gravity Works Architecture for the Fire Station Number One project, and that contract was previously approved on September 22nd. The original contract was with PKHLS Architecture, and they've since changed their name to Gravity Works. The existing architect contract preliminarily indicated that the architect would reach 100% completion on all construction documents in mid-December, and that construction would commence in mid-January. I understand that the architect now anticipates completing all construction documents on honor before January 9th, and that delay is primarily attributable to additional time and resources devoted by the architect and its staff to the recent PDD zoning matter for that fire station property. I've spoken, we've spoken with Fruit Development Group, the owner's representative for this project, and they estimate that, at this point, construction with Bus Boom and Raw will likely commence around late February and be completed in late summer around mid-August. So, the proposed amendment simply adjusts the estimated design and construction milestones under the design contract based upon the current status of the project. There's no additional compensation being paid to Gravity Works, and there's no fiscal impact from this matter. Rather, it's just an adjustment to the estimated dates under the original contract.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this?
On the, under the recitals, you use the word "around" a lot. Around March 1st, around August 15th, around September 15th. In my mind, the contracts are made to, you know, take all the ifs and buts out of a contract. And I was just curious why the word "around" is used. And does that need to be defined, then?
Sure. The, am I correct that we're looking in the new Section 1.1.4?
Correct.
The, the original contract established all of these dates as preliminary, and there's a section in the architect contract that establishes these dates, as well as the city's budget, estimated scope of the project as being at the essence of the compensation that the city has agreed to pay. It's not set in stone what the city's budget is in the architect contract, because that hadn't been figured out yet. The construction commencement dates and completion dates hadn't been set in stone in the architect contract. Again, that'll all be determined under Bus Boom and Raw's contract with the city, once that is finalized. So, these dates are simply estimates in the architect contract. The reason that we're amending them, again, because they're estimates, is because there is a provision in the architect contract that says that if there's any material change in any of these basic assumptions, such as the overall budget, the size and scope of the project, and the, and the estimated dates, the architect may be entitled to additional compensation. We're, we're simply adjusting those dates to, to protect the city in the future against any claim that back in December, there was a delay that justifies additional compensation. And the architect also sees benefit in it too, for other reasons.
So, this is somewhat of a draft proposal, then?
No.
A draft document?
Not really. Commissioners, the Section Point 1 is the only one that really matters with regard to the architect's obligations, the designer's obligations. And it, it says, "The architect shall complete 100% construction documents by January 9th." That's very specific. Items Point 2 and Point 3 with the "around" are simply to inform you of the reflected anticipation of the dates that will, as Aaron mentioned, that will be more specifically reflected with the actual contractor. So, it's just a reminder of where we would like to be, those will be, and that Point 4 really kind of describes that. So, yeah, as we, because the designer does their part by January 9th, and then their obligation, they have certain obligations after that, but they don't control the contractors' timelines. But this is just to give you an idea of what those timelines are. So, you should expect the timelines with the contractor to be very close to this, but it kind of helps you to understand that.
Good. Any other questions?
On, on having the PDD as, I mean, that's, by spending the time to get the PDD, that's basically the delay in the, in the timing.
Yeah, and as early as we're able to get started, even with that, we're, really, there's a pretty big window still left of getting this project all done in a single season. As Aaron mentioned, getting it finished in the summertime, there's still, you still have fall, which we wouldn't want to go to, we want to keep a disciplined timeline, but it doesn't really have any effect whatsoever on the project. But it is, that is a reflection, I'm needing to call a bit of a timeout on certain things to go back and focus and get the PDD approval.
And the PDD action was taken last week, correct, on that?
I think that's correct, yeah.
So, was it originally something that we didn't feel like we would have, and we decided that we probably wanted to go in that direction, or what is the?
Actually, I think it was a result of a plan review comment from the development review team that wasn't anticipated at the outset. And that's kind of typical for plan review, those are the items that we would identify, and then the architect took responsibility for resolving the zoning.
Okay, well, it looks like that then the DRT kind of picked it up and probably helped it cause less of a delay than it might have otherwise had, so that's good.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment? Okay. Seeing none, bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 14-7169, authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment to architects agreement.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 14-7169. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. And I think it takes us to any other business, or developing business, there's nothing,